That some of the information that was sent to me did have a third party.
Yeah.
Background to it.
Yeah, we, we started calling and those posts have since been taken off, but now they're, they're, the hotels are saying call for rate and yet we have yet to find anything resembling those posts. So I think somebody's out there just putting out a false narrative and you know, you know, false, false information gets around very quickly.
It does, especially with Facebook, because it's, it's all over Facebook and then one person passes it and another person passes it.
I, 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 I went on, I went on to anyone to report, but he's paid this. Not one person's. See.
Good morning or good afternoon?
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Hello, hello.
So who's without water? Who's without water? I'm supposed to pipe.
Is everyone getting that echo?
I'm getting it. I'm getting it. I think right now we're lucky that we're lucky. Did you begin some?
I said, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear now. I can hear now.
They, I just. At home.
Made it home.
That's during a band.
We're getting some feedback. Yeah, this.
Yeah, this.
So who do we got on?
With this echo, it's gonna be hard. It's gonna be hard to understand.
Last time we had normal mute and it helped a lot.
It looks like everybody's muted, but the one speaking, the one speaking.
Okay. Uh, do we have everybody to, uh, do we can start? Who are we miss? We not missing anybody? Deitra, Marison, Mark's on Denise is on Tom's on is, uh, Mr. Thompson's gonna, not gonna be here today.
Will not be on mayor.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna go ahead and, uh, I'm gonna call the meeting to. Of the Odessa City Council Work Session Agenda, uh, this Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. It is three, uh, three o'clock. Uh, we're gonna start with the invocation. Uh, if we can take a moment, uh, let me, uh, commence by this prayer. The light of truth and of kindness, our Lord and our God, we can, uh, we cannot start this proceeding of this meeting without directing to you our call and our praise. Lord, our God, we give us this opportunity to gain from this meeting, increase unity of purpose and will. The best intentions of programs and projects in the midst of diverse approaches and friendships among co-equals. Bless abundantly all who are present, so that through this meeting, we may be granted a mind to know you, a heart to seek you, wisdom to find you and conduct in pleasing to you. Hope of finally realizing our dreams and expectations according to your divine will. For the true benefit of the, of our beloved city of Odessa and for the people we serve. And all of God's children responded by saying, amen.
Amen.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to. Item one, consider contract extension to the purchase of polymer, Mr. Tom Kerr. Is Tom on?
Is he not on?
There's somebody that needs to mute, seeming like there's some children in the background.
Oh, that's me. I've got, I've got my, my, my grandkids here, so. They're in the next room, but you know, they're, 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 they're eleven, uh, eight and, and six, so.
Okay, I just know I was hearing it and I didn't know who wasn't muted, so okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to, we're, it's like herding cats. I apologize for that.
I understand. I do.
Ma- mayor, I don't know if Mr. Kerr is on, uh, I don't know if Joanne, Joanne, are you on?
I'm here. I'm on.
Can you talk about the?
Yes.
Contract extension of polymer, please?
Yes, sir. This is just, uh. Uh, we went for bid for this contract back in 2019 and we're just trying to extend, extend that contract because it expired, uh, last month. So there's just gonna be like a 0.3% increase.
Okay.
They were, um, the only ones that we were able to get a quote from last time. So I attached, uh, the letter where they approved the extension.
Mayor, like, like, uh, many of our other contracts, we, we have the ability to extend the contract, uh, period for this year. We're gonna exercise this one, uh, on this one, uh, a couple of years rather. Uh, as, as Joanne indicated, it's only a point zero three percent increase.
Yeah.
Total maximum annual expenditure for this polymer and polymer is, is a, um, uh, a chemical that's needed, uh, as part of our water treatment process. Uh, the total annual expenditure will be about $50,000.
Okay, see that? That's within your range. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any other questions, uh, comments? Okay, seeing that there is none, we're gonna move on to item two, consider the purchase and implementation of the Tyler X U Time Time and Attendance Software, uh, Mr. Parrish.
Hello, all. Um, this is, um, but X- 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 time is an extension of the Tyler Muna system that we use, uh, for the financial system. Um, basically, um, we're gonna use this to, it will enable the city to process complex work schedules for the public safety employees, including the accumulation of overtime and compensation time. Um, this includes new time clock equipment that we have for, um, various other employees that use that, that are not on the regular time system. Um, this will be paid for from leftover funds that are available from the money set aside for the Tyler building inspection software. Um, that we did not use and leave of a less expensive permit now software that which is already implemented. Um, the total, the total cost for the implementation, as I pull this up, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Total, total cost of the implementation is going to amount to $163,000, uh, with a reoccurring, reoccurring fees of $12,295.
Is a recurring fee a, uh, a maintaining fee or is it a update and maintaining fee operational?
Yes, just like, just like all the, of our major softwares, it includes, uh, maintenance, um, upgrades and, um, su- support if we need it, if it is to malfunction.
Okay. Uh, does council have any questions or comments, uh, Mr. Parrish?
What, what will this do for us? Give, give me a little more idea, a little more detail on what, what it's gonna do for us.
So basically, this is, um, an advanced scheduling program. Right now, and I'll, I'll let Cindy elaborate on it. Right now, we're manually maintaining comp time and overtime for our public safety officers. This will be software that we can use to maintain that in a orderly fashion.
Would this be, th- th- this is basically gonna be able to keep up with what, uh, uh, they're accumulating in comp time and, uh, and, and as they're use it and what is left and, um, what have accumulated throughout the year and what they've used, things of that nature?
Correct, and it'll, it's, it's a Tyler Munus product, so it'll, it'll go seamless seamlessly into our payroll software and financial software.
Well, it also, uh, allow as people start taking time off to automatically, uh, uh, inject it into the, into the system. So as, you know, when, 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 when it's sent out and, and, and pay is going on, they can basically see what the difference is between regular time, uh, uh, overtime and comp time and when PTOs be used, these of that nature.
Correct, that's what, that's what the software is all about.
So basically, it's just kind of my Ulti Pro. I've got the same thing in my system for the employees, so basically that's what I've got going.
Mayor, right now, we spend an inordinate amount of time tracking that information manually. It is labor intensive for our finance, for our payroll folks. Currently, um, in the police department, you really don't have the ability to assign the comp time to those guys, um, because the system just simply won't allow it.
Right.
Also, there are too many people within the organization, within the PD, that we don't have enough people to manually, uh, take that information in. So this will allow us to get away from that manual process and make it automated.
Yeah, intensive. I've got the same thing going on. We've gone through, uh, workflow. Uh, we've got to check right now my Ulti Pro and it, it, I mean, it has its issues and sometimes it goes down, but nonetheless, it saves a lot, a lot of time. We have about 300 employees spread out the entire country. Uh, something like this, you really can have it to move. You can use it on a, a desktop, you can use it in your phone. And, and so it, it is, it is, it is becoming a, it just on that. Uh, any more questions or comments?
When will we be able to implement this?
And what we'd have to do is once the contract is signed, get it over to Tyler for implementation. Usually, there's a lead time of anywhere to six weeks, um, to get a team together. Um, once they let us know, we'll have a better idea of how long it'll take to implement it. Once we get started, they expect anywhere from four to six months to get it implemented.
And then it's gonna, there's gonna be a learning curve and people are gonna be frustrated, but once you learn it, it's gonna be simple. So, very good. Anybody have any more questions and comments? Mr. Parrish, thank you very much and we'll continue to wait for more updates as we get closer to implement, you know, look at this book.
Appreciate it.
We're gonna go on to, uh, item number, uh, number three, consider contract extension with Baron Service Parts Company for the onsite and management supply, uh, Joanne Sanmaniego.
Hello. Yes, uh, this is a contract that we have already with, uh, NAPA. And there is, uh, equipment services where they issue parts for their fleet, for our fleet. And we're trying to renew and extend this contract for another three years. And this will be our final renewal contract. And the annual cost of this is 300,000. And I was noticing I didn't attach the signed letter to it, so I will make sure that gets on there.
Have we always had their contract with them? Is this for sure or this has been, uh, ongoing re occurring contract with NAPA?
It has been ongoing.
Okay.
Uh, this will be the final and we'll have to go forward from our bid. Twenty-four.
Okay.
Is, is, is this a cost plus system? How do they, how is the 300,000 direct?
Right, yeah.
Yes, this is, they, uh, we have to pay for the cost of the parts. But we gave a discount and then there's a service charge that they charge us.
Councilmember sprawls, this is Philip. Um, so, so with this.
Oh, thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir. With, with this, with this contract, we pay a discounted fee for the part from NAPA. And then there is a, uh, anywhere between a 10 to a 20% markup on that. But with that markup, that allows them to provide two employees to staff all of our parts. Typically, we, we get parts overnight, uh, from many of the NAPA warehouses in Texas. And we have a unique fleet of both light and heavy duty vehicles, so they are able to, to stock and warehouse the, the variety of parts we have. Uh, this is, council, this, uh, contract also covers all of our diagnosis software for our mechanics. So, um, anything we plug into that's not proprietary, uh, to, to diagnose the Ford, Chevy, the Rush, I'm sorry, the Peterbilt, uh, Kenworth vehicles, we also get that software from NAPA as well.
So down.
So, so word, how do we determine the hu- the hundred thousand dollars a year? I assume it's a three-year contract.
Yes, sir. So, so councilmember sprawls with that, that 300,000 is a not to exceed amount. And if we hit that amount, we'll be sitting in front of the council again, asking to, uh, allocate more funds to this contract. But basically what it is, is that not to exceed annually a 300,000 for parts, the purchase of parts.
Have the, have the city gone out and, um, seeked another, um, supplier just to see if the, of the, of the cost could be, be, uh, be, because I know right now, everyone's, um, everything prices, because they're trying, they're trying to get business that, that they've, uh, lost in the past, so.
Yes, sir. So, so councilmember, this is a, a renewal of, uh, of the contract, um, um.
We're stuck in this contract for, for this past, this time.
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat your, your question?
Yes, sir. So, so we're gonna, we're stuck in this contract until, um, the end of this year, right, or this next number, correct?
Yes, sir. So this is, what we're seeking from council at the next, uh, council meeting is a, is a three-year renewal. The contract allows for three-year renewals at a time. Um, when we did put this out to bid at, at the, at the last time, we, we had two groups that, uh, that applied for, for the bid and, and going back to us being a, a diverse fleet, really could, um, could operate this stuff, we have not. Fill up your head now.
Yeah, cutting out, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I apologize. At this point, we, we, uh, are just seeking the renewal. We have not gotten and asked other firms for, for other bids at this point. We've been, um, internally as staff satisfied with the service we received with NAPA and we want to continue service with them and that's what we're seeking from council.
Yeah, I know, a big part of it is customer service and they've been, and they're providing good service and, you know, we're getting treated well and getting taken care of. I mean, that has a lot to do with also, so.
Yeah, yeah, councilmember Mata, I'll tell you that, uh, both myself and, uh, Edward Molinar, who is our garage manager, we have direct contact to even the local general manager of the NAPA store. So if we're encountering issues, we can have those resolved, uh, very swiftly.
So with this contract, it kind of provides like a VMI, like a vendor management inventory where they come in. They have, they have their, their NAPA personnel out there at the shop, kind of taking the daily inventory and just restocking everything and.
Ye- yes, sir. So, so essentially, NAPA operates a private city of Odessa counter store in our equipment services shop that provides our parts.
I, I know this might be a little technical, but what did we spend on parts in the last 12 months?
Uh, councilmember, I don't have that in front of me, but I can definitely get you that, that information.
Well, you know, we're talking about $900,000 over the next three years and, and, and I'm not saying that's not legitimate. I'm just, um, won't know how we got there.
Yes, sir. I can get you a, a breakdown of, of those, uh, those costs. Uh, but just as a reminder, councilmember sprawls, this is a, a not to exceed contract. We're not asking council to approve an automatic $300,000 purchase. We receive monthly invoices that we pay towards NAPA. And so those fees would be based on what we're actually consuming on, on parts.
Okay. All right, I would like to see if you can, or if Cindy can pull that up. She can usually do it in a hurry. Anyway, I would like to see that, what we're spending on parts.
Yes, sir. I will work on getting that for you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll, let's send that to the whole council as well, Philip. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Okay, we're gonna move to item four, consider contract extension for tire replacement or repair. Esamaniago.
Uh, Philip, you want to take that?
Yes, ma'am. I'm pulling up the, I'm pulling up the agenda item here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, uh, so, so council, this is also a, uh, contract renewal for the purchase, uh, and repair of tires with, uh, Southern Tire Mark. Uh, I will tell council that this, um, has been a, uh, a challenge uh, for us at, at Equipment Services to maintain a tire vendor. Uh, going back to, uh, the same notion with parts, having a very diverse fleet, we have to get tires repaired on, on fire trucks, police cars, uh, backhoes, things of that nature. And so tho- those, uh, those, uh, services are, are definitely, uh, can, can cripple a fleet if we don't have good tires out on the road. Uh, so we have partnered, uh, with Southern Tire Mark. Uh, we put out a bid in 2017 for the service of our tires and they have offered to keep their, um, pricing the same for another year to, uh, to renew with them. And so we'd like to seek another one-year renewal with, uh, Southern Tire Mark for tire service. This is the purchase, repair of our tires and they also provide a, a tire, um, uh, service person at our solid waste division as they're the most, um, um, user of tire repair services since they're driving in the alleys, landfill, things of that nature. And again, this is a, a not to exceed contract of, of 300,000.
Excellent. Anybody have questions or, uh, comments?
I guess I would have the own, uh, same request I had before. Can, can we see the budget and, and what our actual has been? Uh, if you would send that out to us, I'd appreciate it. Well.
Yes, sir. We can work on that.
Have we had any, uh, 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 inventory issues, uh, you know, having COVID, you know, we, in kind of way, you know, there, there for a while when we were real busy, there were certain types of tires you really couldn't get. Uh, and, uh, we've had a lot of, uh, uh, manufacturer issues in the past. Have we experienced that at all in the city with, uh, the divert from Honda tires and the sizes? Are we expanding that?
No, no, sir. We have not experienced, uh, um, a shortage of tires on our side. Uh, the, the benefit of working with Southern Tire Mark on our heavy, uh, side tires, they ability to retread tires. So when we have a tire go bad, they can make repairs on those, uh, pretty easy. So, so we have not seen issues with those.
That's good. That's a lot of savings of money.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any more questions or comments?
So that, that, that service of the retreading explains why we haven't gone over 300,000, because tires get very expensive over here. Especially with that, with a fleet of vehicles like that, so a retreading service is a huge plus.
Yes, sir. Definitely. We try to do that and we try to salvage any tire that we can. Uh, I, I will tell you, our equipment services folks will make sure that, uh, there's at least an attempt to repair a tire if there is an ability. And if not, uh, that they will go for a new tire. Philip, just for, just for the council's college, how many pieces of wood, uh, how many pieces of equipment can you maintain tires on? Uh, we have 850 vehicles, including trailers. And they can, um, Southern Tire Mark test their all of our tires. Yes, sir. They take care of all of them. Anything from a backhoe to a trailer, they can take care of. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any more questions, any more comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to item number five, consider a resolution accepting and appropriating a donation from the Chuck Wagon Gang to the Odessa Police Department.
Good afternoon. Um, this is simply a request to accept a donation in an amount of $52,000, um, the Chuck Wagon Community Fund. These funds were raised at, uh, packing the blue event, uh, back in October. And it, and it just shows the generosity that we see in our community towards us and, and the support that we, that we.
Are there any questions or, uh, comments, uh, Chief? Did anybody make the, uh, check presentation there, uh, Chief Kirke?
They did. They, they came last week and made the, the check presentation, uh, because they wanted to, um, the council session, but it's virtual right now, so they decided not to do that.
Excellent. What, uh, what, what, what is this going to, how are you gonna apply? Do you already have a? A file?
Well, actually, uh, we're looking at several virtual trainers for our new training facility, um, that we teach, shoot, don't shoot, some of those, uh, there is that would teach de-escalation, that would teach, um, things of that nature. So, yeah, I mean, what, there's a, a absolute, absolutely a great use for it.
This is great. Thank you, the Chuck Wagon Gang for everything they, they do for us, especially supporting the Odessa Police Department. Any more questions or, uh, comments on this item? Okay, seeing that there is, now we're gonna move on to the next item. Item six, the data resistance appliance and accept fund for the 2021, uh, head grant. Chief Kirke.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a request for, to allow us to apply for the height of grant, the high intensity drug trapping area grant against a man of $29,300, uh, with no match from the city. What it does is allow us to, um, have an Odessa Police Department officer with the height of task force with the DEA. Uh, and they will cover, uh, overtime funds and, excuse me, overtime funds and, and that sort of thing. Uh, again, no match from the city, um, that we've been a part of off and on for several years.
Okay, well, sounds good. This, is this annual?
This is annual, yes, sir.
All right. Okay, any, uh, questions or comments for Chief Kirke? Chief, appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you've done. Yeah, tell everybody, O P D, stay warm and, and continue to, continue. Thank you for, uh, these hard times that we're going through right now.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we're gonna go move on to item seven. Consider the purchase of three Ford F, uh, 550 chassis Bron ambulances with, uh, City and Martin, uh, Emergency Group. Rod Hub, Rod Hub, you're, you're, is he on?
Yes, sir. Hello, Mayor, uh, City Council. Good afternoon. Uh, we are asking for approval of, uh, Odessa Fire Rescue to replace two of our oldest Freightliner ambulances. Along with one brand new addition for the new station number nine. Uh, this build time takes about 13 months from the time the P O is issued to actual delivery to Odessa. It then takes time, uh, to get Equipment Services to place the unit in service and do warranty work. Uh, these ambulances are the hardest working vehicles in our fleet and make the most calls in our department. For about over 85% of our emergency incidents are EMS in Hector County. Uh, two of these replacement ambulances will come out of the Equipment Services Replacement Fund. Uh, and then one of these ambulances for station nine will come out of the fire station budget for, uh, for the new station bond.
Okay, which, which stations are getting, will, will eventually get the, the, uh, the new, the new equipment?
So the two replacement ambulances would probably, probably be, uh, station eight and station seven. Right now, those ambulances have over 100,000 miles on them. And as we were talking about parts earlier, those get, uh, repaired quite often.
Yeah.
So it gets to a point where you're repairing them so much that's, you know.
Yeah.
So right now, as it sits right now, those would probably be the two ambulances we'd replace.
Okay, understandable.
And Rod, those two are scheduled repla- replacements.
Yeah.
That is correct. We, yes, that is a scheduled replacement.
What's the cost per ambulance?
So it's about, uh, 312,000 dollars per ambulance. Uh, we are saving some money. We did do some Equipment Services, uh, agreement that, uh, the Ford F 550 chassis is cheaper to replace and fix than the Freightliner chassis and is also quicker to get ambulances back in service. We actually did, uh, run nine ambulances yesterday. We were kept running out of ambulances in Hector County so much because of the bad weather and nursing homes, uh, running out of power. Uh, so we actually did run nine ambulances yesterday, but we could not have run 10. We have three ambulances in the shop as it sits.
Hmm, okay. Yeah.
We have three in the shop out of how many?
Three in the shop out of 12. Yes, sir.
So.
Which is about average.
25% of them are in the shop.
That's, that's about, yes, sir. That's correct.
That's expensive.
Hey, Rod. Rod?
Yes.
Hey, uh, I'm sorry I had to step away, so I missed a little bit of that. Uh, but on these new, uh, medics, you guys are going away from the, the squad, the big, the big chassis, right? I mean, the four-door.
Yes, ma'am. That, that is correct. With us having six-man stations, we can go back to the two-door ambulances, because we. we can go back to the two-door ambulances, cause we won't have the four-door either or concept. So that does, we do, we are able to save a little bit of money using the two-door ambulances versus the four-door ambulances, that is correct.
Okay.
Any more questions or comments uh for, for Rod? Rod, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Keep up the good work of what we're, what we're experiencing right now, to all the guys that, uh great job.
Thank you, mayor.
Uh we're gonna move to item eight, Odessa Fire Rescue's requesting permission to apply for the twenty 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 assistance firefighter grant, is that right? Twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
That, that would be the twenty twenty, uh twenty twenty-one assistance firefighter grant. I believe Chief Alvarez is having some tech, technical difficulties, so he asked me to speak in his behalf.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
Uh there is a big issue in the fire service with cancer, as some of y'all are aware. And so we are asking for uh permission to apply for a grant to, that would allow cancer screening for our firefighters. This would be a ninety-four thousand dollar grant. Uh if we can apply that, and that would be a huge benefit uh to Odessa Fire Rescue and the firefighters for the city of Odessa.
What's he, uh, what's he, uh, who's the grant with, is there any, any matching funds, and will this be an occurring a, a annual grant?
Yes, sir, this is a federal grant, uh a federal grant, our matching part would be eighteen thousand and eight hundred. And we have that, that we can do that if, if we get the, the big part of the grant. And I believe this is reoccurring, I, I'm not quite sure, but I think this is annual.
Uh mayor, that's specifically from the Department of Homeland Security. Uh and the matching part of that would be twenty-seven, twenty, twenty percent of that ninety-four thousand, which would be about eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars, and we do have the, the funds available to make that match.
What uh, what do we be screening for in the cancer, what, 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 what issues that we have in with the, is this exposure to SOD? Uh asbestos, uh what, what, what are we experiencing, what are we seeing?
Any carcinogens that we deal with, with structure fires, uh hazmat, chemical releases, uh brain cancer, lung cancer, all, all the cancers that come with that.
Okay, and would this allow for all the uh fire rescue personnel to be uh, to be screened?
Yes, sir, this would allow all of our employees here to be, to be screened for that, that is correct.
We're doing pre-screening, right?
Currently, uh we do uh very, very small amounts, and it's hit and miss. So we're not very comprehensive at all, to be honest, and that's, that's one of our big uh goals for this, this next year.
Well, I'll tell you, anything that you can catch early, I am a testimony to that. And so uh as I continue in my cancer battle, uh yeah, definitely. Uh way to stay on top of, this is something that we uh, you know, we read about, we've known about. And uh, yeah, anything that we can do preventative, get ahead of it, is definitely the worth, worth the investment. Uh does anybody have any more questions or uh comments for uh Rod?
I'd like to um ask Chief uh Hubert to just keep us posted with this. I agree with the mayor that anything we can catch, you know, the sooner we can catch it, the better. And this is really, really a worthwhile deal, and you know, looking out for whoever this would cover is really important to me. You know, so that we can get ahead of it, and you know, sorry for whoever's having to deal with it. But you know, if we can get ahead of it, just keep us posted on where we are with it.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, we will do that.
And also, thank you for all your work that you're doing with the I C, and you know, keeping us above ground on that, we appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
All of you.
So Rod, on this, are you planning to incorporate this is um, you know, like for new hires? Or, you know, part of their physical, or how, how do you plan?
Yes, we're, it's, it's supposed to be a very comprehensive of the amount of employees we have. And so we would implement it, once it's approved, we would do it annually, every year for the employees that we have currently employed with us during that time. Yes, ma'am.
So uh Rod, uh this is a competitive grant, and obviously, we won't know for some time um if we're gonna get the grant correct.
Yeah.
That is correct, that is accurate, it's a very competitive uh grant also.
I'm sure. Any more uh questions or comments uh for Rod?
Rod, do you think that it will benefit us in the application that we're in a um heavy petrochemical environment? Uh I mean, does that, do you think that can play any part in, you know, helping to uh enhance our application?
We, we do believe that, we do, and like you said, we are very heavy petrochemical uh area, city, county. And uh, and we make a lot more than the average department does as far as structure fires, residential fires, commercial fires. Uh you bet, so we, we do believe this would be very beneficial, absolutely.
Yeah.
Any more comments or questions? Rod, we appreciate everything you guys are doing, keep up the good work, and uh stay warm, stay safe out there, guys.
Thank y'all, we appreciate y'all's support.
Most definitely. Uh seeing that uh that was the last item, do I have a motion and a second to uh adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by uh Councilman Mata, second by uh Councilman Sprouse, all in favor, indicated by saying yeah. All opposed, saying but, indication second name? Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, thank you for breaking the cold weather and coming on, and and be thankful that each and every one of you, we all have electricity, we serve, we serve, uh we talk to you, uh real quick, we'll go on, I'm gonna call two, they're calling about this place, the hotel, which I know is not occurring. Uh you guys can see, we're we are, you did, Michael? Michael, where's Jerry? Okay, I'm sorry, uh I'm sorry?
I don't think we can discuss it as a group.
Okay, no, um, no problem, uh the guys will just be careful, stay warm, we will be talking, you'll see, okay? Bye-bye. Getting a real bad backlog on.